All right, well, good afternoon. It is now five o'clock and I'd like to call this school board meeting to order exactly at five. And we'll begin with a roll call vote.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Here.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Here.
Trustee Abdali.
Here.
Trustee Katz.
Here.
Trustee, you, are you, oh, not yet. Okay, I'm Trustee Nakatani and I'm here.
All right. And with that, before we go into closed session, the public has the right to comment on closed session agenda items prior to the body going into closed session. Do we have any public comments at this time? Seeing none, then we will now be considering the following Public Employee Performance Evaluation Title Superintendent in closed session. And I'll close this meeting at 5:01. Keep your cell phone.
Carbs.
Okay. Are you ready?
Almost, give like a few more minutes.
Not almost.
Do we have Young He on?
Yeah.
Okay, so we need to ask her to be on.
Yeah, that's right. How many it's not even known, but come get back.
Okay, great. Are we ready?
Yeah. Everybody's ready? Are we ready? Put chocolate in my mouth.
And me too.
Here, you get your own now.
Oh, I do, I like handed that back to you.
No, I didn't.
Like, I don't want to take.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, good evening and welcome to our August Board Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:04 PM. And let's begin our meeting with roll call.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Present.
Trustee Abdali.
Present.
Trustee Katz.
Present.
Trustee, you.
Present. It says I can't start the video, though. I don't know why.
Oh, okay.
See if you can start it on your and Young He and we'll, we'll work on that. But thank you, and we're glad that you're here.
Yeah.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, I'm here.
All right. Next on the agenda is any reportable action from closed session. And I can share with you that we had no reportable action at that time. So next, we'll move to approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have to roll call this?
Actually, do we have to roll call this as well? Yes, because we have so, we have Trustee you on.
Remote.
Remote, we'll have to roll call. All right.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And Trustee Nakatani, aye.
All right. And something new and exciting on our agenda, thank you Superintendent Kaufman, is an opportunity for your board to share about our governance norms, vision, mission, statement, and some words of inspiration. So I'm going to start off this evening. For those of you who don't know who I am, I am President Michelle Sernsich Hodge. And as in, putting my educator hat on, I was looking at our vision and I was, I got expi, you know, kind of inspired by it, as I hadn't actually looked at it carefully as it relates to what kind of inspiration I might be able to share. So our vision statement states, "Our learning community is dedicated to developing globally-minded, compassionate, resilient, and courageous students to learn and lead and change in their world." And I thought, what are the two words that really resonate for me when I was a teacher for seventeen years and a principal for five and district office? Were the two words courageous and compassionate. So I did a little work on that and came up with a quote I just really love. It's, the quote is that courage gives us a voice and compassion gives us an ear. Without both, there is no opportunity for empathy and connection. And if, if I think of the work that I did with students, it's having that empathy and connection between and among my students and their families that created, you know, the, the ground upon which those seeds of learning could be nourished and flourish. So I wanted to invite myself to remember to model and be courageous, have a voice, but also be compassionate in really listening this year so that we can develop in this district the empathy and connection that I feel we all are yearning for and that will create that, you know, that landscape and field in Mill Valley School District for our students to all blossom and thrive. So those are my thoughts for, for you tonight. And now, communications to the board, but I don't know if you, Superintendent Kaufman, have a few words.
Yes.
All right.
This is. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So one of the things we're working on is our board protocols. And one of the things I've expressed to staff, but I'm going to reiterate for the staff and for any trustees, is that we are going to work with, you know, we'll present our information, will there be a staff presentation, there'll be board discussion, or me, sorry, staff presentation, public comment, board questions and answers, question, question period, and then board deliberation followed by making a motion to encourage us to make sure all voices are heard. I'm asking that staff and any presenters wait for the president of the board to recognize them before speaking. I suggest that we follow that norm also for board members, just because that way we know when to talk and we can, we can monitor voices. But that is definitely the guidance that I'm providing to staff, which you can remind me when I forget, because I will jump in undoubtedly. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I do recognize that since I cannot see Trustee you, there is a bit of a disadvantage in terms of, you know, some kind of physical acknowledgement that she wants to speak. But Trustee you, I'll make sure that I ask you. And then fellow board members, if you just want to give me a sign, that way we can move effectively and quickly. All right, thank you Superintendent Kaufman. And now, e-communications to the board. This is the opportunity for public comment. And we value public comment on educational issues and provide this time for members of the audience to address the board on any school-related matter not on the agenda. So I'd like to ask at this time if we do have any public comment.
If you know.
All right, so, hearing we don't have any public comment.
Yes, yes.
Oh, so do, so.
Do I need to fill out a card?
Please do.
I don't think.
Or you know what?
You can do it after.
You can do it after. Come on up, come on up, Mr. Waldeck.
All right.
Come on up and please identify yourself. And, and if you're with any school.
Oh, sure.
All right, and we're going to give you three minutes.
Thank you.
So hold on. We're going to give Clifford Waldeck three minutes.
Put on the clock.
Here we go. All right, we, yes, he will identify himself for the record.
Thank you.
And when we're, are we ready? Sid?
Um, no, I'm sorry, talking to Trustee you. Um, we are.
Okay, please.
Hi. Good afternoon, board members and Superintendent Kauf, Kaufman. My name's Clifford Waldeck and I have the honor of being a substitute teacher in the schools here. And I want to thank you first for not hovering the pay for the subs the way Tamalpais High School District did. So I appreciate that. But the reason why I'm up here and it's something I've been bending the ear of the board for a long time, and that is having a opt-in program so I can sign up to get the notices of the board meetings. Because most other elected groups have that, and then that way I can get it on my calendar and I get a reminder of things. And so that's my big ask, ask here. So, thank you very much. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, Clifford Waldeck, appreciate it. Any other public comments? All right. So seeing none, let us go on to the approval of consent agenda. But first, I'm going to ask if board members have any items they wish to pull from the consent agenda at this time. Hearing or seeing?
No interest with Young He.
No interest? Young He, can you? Okay, Young He, do you have an interest in pulling any items?
No, no, I don't.
Okay.
I'm trying to start the video, so, sorry about this.
No problem, thank you. All right, well, seeing none, then we will move to, have a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is.
I moved. I moved to approve consent agenda.
Second? I'll second. And so now.
Trust, uh, sorry, President Sernsich Hodge.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye, with a copy out of anything appearing on my Form 700.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye. Thank you.
All right. Now, we will move through H because we had no items removed. And we'll go on to business and financial matters. And I do understand that we have Dr. Rollins who will introduce our budget revision.
Great, so this is our first budget revision for the 23-24 fiscal year. And this is subsequent to the budget adoption that the board had on June 15th. Subsequent to that, there was a board meeting on June 23rd, and the board took action to move ahead with the approval of the AB 1200 disclosure documents specifically for the Mill Valley Teachers Association as well as CSEA. So this budget revision before you represents those changes. And that's why at this time you'll see no changes to the revenues, but where you will see changes are on the expense side. And so this represents a change of $2.6 million. And the details are following in the subsequent pages. The first page is the summary page. The second two pages are the unrestricted budget. And then pages three and four are the restricted side of the budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And then there will be subsequent budget revisions that will rebound forward in the future as well as on the first interim financial reporting.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Do we have any public comment on this issue?
No.
Okay, seeing no public comment, I'm going to open it now for any comments or questions. Trustee you.
No, I don't have any comments.
All right, seeing no comments or questions, may I have a motion to approve the budget revisions?
So moved.
Motion to approve.
A second?
A second, she can make the motion from the back.
Okay, she made the motion and we'll have Trustee Abdali second.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye.
Excellent. All right, and onward to the second item under I, Business and Financial Matters, AB 1200 Disclosure Document. Dr. Rollins, thank you.
Great, these are the Assembly Bill, AB 1200 Disclosure Documents for the Administration Confidential and Unrepresented Staff. And this does include the disclosure documents from July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2025. These documents are required to be disclosed to the public prior to any approval of the board. And so this does show the financial implications of making a decision for any negotiated settlement. These, this group is unrepresented and therefore it is not represented by a union similar to MBTA or CSEA. And so that's why you will see these as a separate agenda item. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Just as a procedure, these documents have been already reviewed by the Marin County Office of Education as required, and they provided no changes or revisions. And then pending board approval, these will be submitted to the County Office of Education.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Do we have any public comment at this time?
No.
All right, no public comment. Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing or hearing none, may I have a motion to approve AB 1200 Disclosure Document?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. And now, we move to our next agenda item, J Personnel. And thank you, Dagmar Derrickson will present this next item, Salary Schedules for Administration Confidential and Unrepresented.
Perfect. So as Dr. Rollins was saying, presented for you today are the salary schedules for administration confidential and unrepresented for the 23-24 and 24-25 school years. In June of this past year, the board approved salary schedule increases for both MBTA and CSEA. This will be the remaining increases for the other employees unrepresented in our district.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item?
No.
We do not. Do we have any questions, discussion related to these items? Superintendent Kaufman?
Yes, I want, I noted today that we inadvertently omitted the doctoral stipend for administrators, which is commensurate with the stipend that is provided to MBTA. So we will be adding that and bringing it back next month, just in the interest of transparency. But I will be requesting that the board provide that parity.
Thank you very much, Dr. Kaufman. Do we, Young He, would you be able to mute your? Thank you. All right, there we go. All right, um, any other comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the, the salary schedule for administration confidential and unrepresented?
So moved.
I'll second.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye.
All right, all passes. Next, let's go to the amendment and extension to Assistant Superintendent Contract. Thank you Dagmar Derrickson for presenting this one.
Very good. All right, so this is an amendment, as you stated, for the employment agreement with Dr. Michelle Rollins, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. So this amendment would extend the current contract through June 30th, 2027.
Thank you. All right, do we have any questions or comments? Any public comments, excuse me?
No public comments.
Thank you. Seeing no public comment, do we have any questions, comments from board members at this time? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the amendment and extension to Assistant Superintendent's Contract?
So moved.
Second.
All right.
Motion to approve.
No. President Sernsich Hodge.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye.
All right, thank you very much, Dagmar.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Thank you, Dr. Rollins. And now, we're on to K Board Operations. There is Resolution 12-2223, Authorization to Sign on Behalf of the Board. And we have Dr. Rollins and Dr. Kaufman will present this item and a roll call vote is required here.
And this is authorization for Dr. Kaufman, our superintendent, to sign particular documents. And this is a submission to the Marin County Office of Education. And so this is a resolution and does require a roll call vote. There are details specifically on what is allowable and what is not allowable to be signed. We do not put signatures, just as a point of reference, we do not put signatures publicly on the agenda, but it is kept on file.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Do we have any public comment on this agenda item? We don't. Do we have any comments or questions from board members? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve Resolution 12-2223, Authorization to Sign on Behalf of the Board?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll.
President Sernsich Hodge.
Yes, aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee you.
Aye.
And I'm Trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye.
All right, passing with flying colors. Let us now go to Facilities L. And we have a Resolution 1-2324, Lease, Lease Back will be the first of four presentations.
Make the Measure G update.
Oh, did I make a mistake here? Oh, it's not, it's not on my cheat sheet. Okay, Measure G update, come on up.
Good evening, Julio Royo here with, I'm sorry, Julio Royo here, Director of Operations, Beans, and Safety for the Mill Valley School District. I'm here along with Sandrine Hitchcock, our Program Manager for our bond program, and Brett Mitchell, who's the Principal in Charge for AECOM, who's our Bond Man, Bond Program Manager as well. And so tonight, we have a couple items coming up for Measure G as well as facilities. And the first thing is to go over a Measure G update. And so the first thing we're going to be discussing tonight is our Lease, Lease Back. And so what you will see before you tonight are a couple board items to authorize the use of Lease, Lease Back as a construction method for our bond program. And so we're going to be using as a delivery method for our Measure G bond program and implementation, implementing as well a pre-qualification process that we have to do as part of the Lease, Lease Back statutory requirements. And so that will be following up in a, in a board item here soon. Another item that I wanted to update everybody about is our project assignments. So we were going to originally have two project assignments coming forward to the board. We have one, one this month. We have our project assignment that covers Tam Valley, and that's with JK Architecture. And so this covers full architectural and engineering services for our Measure G projects, priority one projects with, for that school site. And so we're, that's where we're going to be requesting board approval for the project assignment so we can get started working with that firm and start developing the plans that we need for our Measure G projects. And for our other school site, we had initially planned to bring forward a project assignment for Strawberry Point. We at this point are going to hold off on doing that. And the reason why is we want to further evaluate the proposals that we've received and we're to be able to weigh them appropriately from different firms as we're looking at the costs and making sure that the scope of work is refined to a point that we feel comfortable bringing it forward for board approval. The, after that, I have California Environmental Quality Act, we have Grecetti Environmental. And so while we're not bringing forward a board approval for request for tonight, we just wanted to update the board that this is our firm that we've selected through our request for proposal process, and they will be working to complete our environmental impact report for the middle school. That won't start until we've, until we've done some selection of our middle school design and options. And so that will be coming to the board on a future board date. But we wanted to make you all aware of who is the firm that we will be working with. As well as for Hazmat, SCA Environmental, we, they will be working with us. Their scope includes testing, reporting, demolition, oversight. And so we will be requesting proposals for the Mill Valley Middle School, Tam Valley, and Strawberry Point as the scope is refined for those schools as we develop our work with our architecture and engineering teams. And so that, a board approvals will come as a request at a future board meeting. And Marin Engineering, that was on our consent, consent item today, so thank you for approving that. They're going to be handling our topographical and utility surveys for the Mill Valley Middle School, Strawberry Point, and Tam Valley. So there, we'll be working with them to update and/or supplement the partial surveys already previously done by the school district. And so we'll be working with them on that. And then Old Mill and Ednum Park will come at a future, at a future board meeting date once we have the required scope that we need to be able to request services from them. And then the last two updates I have is geotechnical services. So they are pending our work with, that we're doing with our architectural partner, Leonikas, for conceptual design approval. And that, you will see that coming in the first quarter of 2024. That's for geotechnical services. And as well as we wanted to update the board, that we're working for our Community Outreach Consultant, we'll be working with N2 Action. And at a future board meeting, we will bring them forward and to discuss, they're going to be working with the AECOM team under them to, and we'll be discussing just the work that we'll be embarking with them as well as the methods that we'll be able to receive feedback from the community. So that's a Measure G update. And as well, and we have here is projected Measure G board timelines. These will be, we will be bringing back these next two slides every month to update as we're proceeding with our work. And so some of this information is going to stay the same, but we will keep updating this as we proceed forward in our Measure G program. This and the next slide, which is our timeline for all the projects. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any public comment on this item? We do not. All right, let's open this up. Do you have a public comment?
Yes.
Okay, then come on up and you'll, you can share the, yeah, share this with the, and we'll give you three minutes. And just let us know who you are so, for the record and all that. So are we ready, Sid? Okay.
This is, um, I know the board probably knows the answer, and I just looked it up. But I think some of these things need explanations that like, what one of your students could understand. So I don't mean to put you on the spot, and I know I can only make comment and not ask a question, but could you provide an overview of what lease, leaseback means? Because I hooked it up and I, and I see, you know, it's $1 and the school gets this and everything. Because if we're going to get community acceptance, we got to be able to explain all of this stuff. So I was just asking about the lease, leaseback.
Thank you.
With your.
Thank you, Clifford. Thank you.
Engulgent.
So we have a question, and now we can open it to board discussion. And we can certainly ask any question that we would like to ask at that time. So let's go ahead, if there are no more questions, okay, to open up for board discussion and questions.
I mean, we had a very helpful and informative session last week on this and dove into detail. So I appreciate you bringing this back, but this all is consistent with what we discussed last week, so I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree. I think just for a little bit of history, we could say, I think it was May 17th, we had a special board meeting just about Measure G. And I believe that is when you presented us with the different types of delivery methods, whether it's lease, leaseback, design, bid, build, design, build, et cetera, et cetera. There are some, I can't recall exactly what the minutes read, but I know that the recording of it is pretty thorough. So it's, 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 there's a lot of good information there. And again, last week's meeting was further built on the decision back in May to go with a lease, leaseback method of delivery, very common for school districts, probably the safest, I don't know if that's the right word, but a decision that this board is very comfortable with, and I can say that.
I would, I would like to ask if, oh, okay, thank you. I would like to ask if we have on our website, and I'm sorry, I have not looked, but an explanation of lease, leaseback. And just kind of, you know, from a lay, for a student to understand just kind of what some of these terms are, and if there's any thought, I could even ask that question of Superintendent Kaufman, perhaps.
And can I, can I ask?
Oh, just, just one, if she could answer my question, and I'll get to you so that I will identify that, Trustee you, you want to ask a question. But Superintendent Kaufman, if you could answer that question?
We, we have a Measure G page and we're populating it with all of our presentations, but I do think it would, we can do a student, you know, quick explanation of lease, leaseback. It will be contained in the slides from May 17th. And also, I encourage anyone who has questions to look at the August 3rd board meeting. It was approximately an hour and I think very informative, so the video is available as well.
So Trustee you has a question?
Yes, I was wondering, is it possible for the district to office to put the past presentations on Measure G in, on the agenda item so people can reference them? Is it? Is that something we can do? Because it's kind of confusing. I mean, there was a lot of that work that went into it. And unless you've been following every meeting, it's hard to know.
You just mentioned that they're on the website.
So, trustee, I mean, excuse me. Thank you, trustee Yu, Superintendent Kaufman?
I think, I mean, we certainly could do that. I think our best approach is to begin to feed people into our Facilities page, the Measure G page. So I would encourage us to consider having a Measure G link in every weekly newsletter that we send out from the district, so that people just become familiar with the work that we're doing. And I believe, I'm not sure if we do Friday updates or what updates we do, but we're going to have a standing item that we share with the community, because the work we're doing is going to be urgent and timely. So we will definitely be keeping people in the loop of the work.
So, the issue is that, you know, the parents get them because they are part of our, you know, they receive our emails. But does the community receive them? I mean, how is it, you know, because there are a lot of interested parties, not just the parents and our school community, but, you know, a lot of retired people who supported the project and support our school district, for example. There are a lot of people outside of the school community who want to know what's going on. So how, what do you think is the most effective way to communicate what's going on to, you know, the broad Mill Valley community?
Superintendent Kaufman?
I would have to ask about the reach of what we have already. But, you know, my understanding, there's also Mill Valley Connect and some other resources with the city and like the Chamber of Commerce. So we can, we can connect to their existing newsletters that are more community-wide. I would also suggest that when we get to a situation where we are determining middle school design, features, cost, that we make a direct mailer to all of the constituents that we use generally in our bond mailing list, so that everybody has the opportunity to respond through a QR code or a paper survey that they return. Just so that, you know, people who aren't using technology to engage in school or community matters actually have the opportunity to hear what's going on.
Any other Board questions, comments?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, I mean, all projects are, you know, all these projects often go, get delayed and go over budget. I think, you know, we have to understand that the community is bigger than, you know, our email database. And, and we need to make sure that all our neighbors and a lot of the, you know, the entire Mill Valley community is aware of what is going on. I just don't know how we do that, so.
Superintendent Kaufman?
We will engage End to Action, the communication organization that's affiliated with our work, because I'm sure they know what to do. And I look forward to learning, because it's something I think we need to do for all of our initiatives.
Alright, so this was an update. So I think we move on to Item 2, which will require vote. Resolution 1-2324, Authorizing Lease, Lease Back Project Delivery Method for District's Measure G Bond Program and Implementing Prequalification Process. Thank you for taking that away, Julio.
Thank you. So we are here tonight for this resolution. What this gives us the ability to use the Lease, Lease Back construction method going forward for our Measure G projects. So this resolution is needed by statute to be able to be adopted by the school board, so we can then use the delivery method. And so we're requesting approval tonight by the Board.
Do we have any public comment at this time? Alright, no public comment. Do we have Board questions? Comments? Alright, roll call vote.
I will say thank you for last week's meeting. That's what I want to say, though. It was, you know, it's really, it's great to get the information in a way ahead of time and to digest it, and so we can come to this meeting.
Thank you, trustee Nakatani.
And be efficient about it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Abdali. She dittoed. Alright. Well done. Alright then, roll call vote, please.
I think we need to move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move.
I'll second.
You move to approve the resolution. Thank you. And we have a second. Alright.
So President Suresh Chhattaj.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee Yu.
Aye.
And I'm trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye.
Alright, thank you. Moving to Item 3, under L Facilities. We have Measure G Bond Program. No, we already just did that. It's the approval, thank you. Measure G Bond Program Update, Lease, Lease Back RFP Approval. If maybe you could share with the public what that means. And thank you, Julio.
Thank you. So the Request for Proposals and Qualifications, this is the vehicle that will be used to gain proposals for our Measure G projects. And so, by approving this RFP, we will then, we will then use our procurement method of advertising it throughout the community and throughout the state to gain vendors to be able to come in, provide proposals for our project here for the middle school, as well as our Measure G projects. And so, this, we're requesting approval for this Request for Proposal and Qualifications.
Do we have any public comment? Alright, I'd like to open it up to the Board for discussion or questions. Alright, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the Measure G Bond Program Update, Lease, Lease Back Request for Proposal or RFP Approval?
So moved.
Alright. I'll second.
President Suresh Chhattaj.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee Yu.
Aye.
And I'm trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye.
Alright, passes unanimously. Now we're on to Number 4. And Julio Arroyo, would you please explain project assignment number 1 to the Agreement for Ongoing Architectural Services with GKAE?
Yes, thank you. So we are requesting approval for our project assignment number 1 for JK Architecture Engineering. And so they will be, once, if, by approving this, they will be providing full architectural and engineering services for our Measure G projects with Tam Valley Elementary. So we will be working with this firm to develop our plans, as well to go through all the pre-work and design that's needed to make these projects come to fruition.
Alright, do we have any public comment on this item? Do we have any Board deliberation or discussion on this item? Alright, seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Alright.
President Suresh Chhattaj.
Aye.
Trustee Abdali.
Aye.
Trustee Katz.
Aye.
Trustee Yu.
Aye.
And I'm trustee Nakatani, I'm an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and moving this along so beautifully. Appreciate it. Alright, and now we're on to Item M, Future Board Items. Future Board Items. And as you can see, we have the addition of a chart which identifies, for our next Board Meeting, the items already identified. And our Board Protocol is that a Board Member can put an item on a future Board Meeting and articulate that item. And if it is seconded and approved, then it will go on that agenda. So, do we have any future Board Agenda Items at this time? Hearing none, then it looks like we actually have a full agenda. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman and Dr. Rollins. It looks like we'll be in good shape for our September Meeting. Okay, let's move right along to our Superintendent's Report. Thank you, Dr. Kaufman.
Before I jump into that, I just want to call the Board's attention briefly to the history of requested Board Items. What you see here are various items that are now included in a year-long calendar. So we've tried to get up to speed. And as I've mentioned in some Board Communications, we will be heavily influenced by conversations around facilities. So I think we have a large charge, at least in the fall to early spring, to spend a lot of time talking about a new middle school. And I will, first of all, say, again, I'm honored and humbled to be here. Now I'm in a month, officially a month and 10 days. I cannot wait for students to get back and teachers to get back and start the work of our school year. Today, we are starting some work as an administrative council. So our Cabinet and all of the school administrators began some work in restorative practices, which is typically recognized as a form of discipline, but really is about community building and ways of engaging with each other to build community through dialogue, discourse, and, when necessary, former structures. So, formal structures. In the audience, there should be copies of this, if anybody wants it. But one of the things that we are looking to create here in our system, because of the work we're trying to do with diversity, equity, inclusion, because of our need to meet the needs of individual learners at whatever performance level they are, whether they need extension or they need acceleration, we need to be able to have conversations together as a community. So, I'll read this poem. It's called "Invitation to Brave Space." We learned today that the author is in some part of a contest. The authorship is contested. So, we will see, but I will share this with you, because this is an aspiration I have for us as a community. Together, we will create brave space. Because there is no such thing as a safe space. We exist in the real world. We all carry scars, and we have all caused wounds. In this space, we seek to turn down the volume of the outside world. We amplify voices that fight to be heard elsewhere. We call each other to more truth and love. We have the right to start somewhere and continue to grow. We have the responsibility to examine what we think we know. We will not be perfect. This space will not be perfect. It will not always be what we wish it to be. But it will be our brave space together, and we will work on it side by side. I leave you with that to start the school year.
Very nice. Thank you so much. I'm inspired. We are going to now go to Board Reports. And I will start myself. And then if you want to, you know, raise your hand up, I can identify you. So I wanted to share that the summer was a time of real rest and rejuvenation, and did not go anywhere. But I had the distinct pleasure of meeting with Superintendent Kaufman and seeing the teamwork that Sid and Anna combined, creating structures for us to come together and create an effective and efficient Board Meeting. So thank you both. And a brand-new space in which to be thought partners with you, Superintendent Kaufman. It's really fabulous. So, thank you. And I was also excited to spend some time with Vice President Nakatani and just kind of reconnect and look forward to doing that with my other fellow Board Members. We are going to have a very exciting September with Board Governance Workshops in the mix. And so we'll, I think that we're off to a great start and appreciate the time to rest and rejuvenate. Let's see. Would you like, okay, trustee Nakatani?
Oh, no, I don't really have a lot to report as a trustee. I would reiterate, I would say, welcome, Dr. Kaufman, to your first regularly scheduled Board Meeting of our school year. And we're super excited.
Trustee Abdali.
All I have to share is Natalie and I joined the PTA Council Meeting the other day. And even though it's still summer and people are still traveling,